Good evening, everyone. This is the Tuesday, March 22, 2022, Blue Lake City Council meeting. At 6:30, it's a regular council meeting. Some folks are via Zoom. We are here in person at the City Council Chambers. I'm your Mayor Adely Jones. We have Chris Kiran to my left, to my right, Ben McCree and Elaine Hogan. Let's start with the Pledge of Allegiance. My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, and who is going to establish a court of the council? We have your City Manager Mandy Baker and Emily Wood is taking our minutes. So, Mandy, would you establish a court of the council, please?
Yes, Mayor Jones.
Here.
Councilmember Hogan.
Here.
Councilmember McCree.
Yeah.
Councilmember Curran.
Yeah.
Okay, we are at a four-council person council right now to be filled later in the evening. And we are now on item two, approve agenda. Is there, first of all, anyone from the council that would like to move anything around? See anything you want to change? Seeing nothing, is there anyone from the audience that would like to move something around on the agenda? Seeing no hands, we will come back to council for an approval of the agenda.
I'll move approval of the agenda as is.
Hold on a second.
Moved by Chris Kiran, seconded by Ben McCree to approve the agenda as delivered. Any other further discussion from council? Discussion from public? Back to council for the vote, all's in favor, say aye. Aye opposed, it passes. We are on item three, public comment. The public is limited, or it's invited, sorry, to present petitions, make announcements, or provide other information to the City Council that is relevant to the scope of authority of the City of Blue Lake that is not on the agenda. The council may provide up to 15 minutes for this public input session. To assure that each individual presentation is heard, the council may uniformly impose time limitations of three minutes to each individual presentation. The public will be given the opportunity to address items that are on the agenda at the time the council takes up each specific agenda item. Is there anyone here from the public that would like to participate in the public comment portion? Okay, seeing no one, we will move on then. Item four, reaffirm the findings of Resolution Number 1192, Resolution of City Council, City of Blue Lake, making findings, first one to Government Code Section 54953, as amended by Sound of Bill 361, and authorizing the continued use of virtual meetings, discussion, and action. So, right now, what we're having is what they're calling hybrid meetings, where we're here in the council chambers at the Skinner Store Community Center, and we have still the option of people phoning in or being zoomed in. And a lot of councils and a lot of organizations are making this model. Is there any discussion on this item? Should we continue? To the feeling of the council. I think we're getting a lot of participation this way. It seems like people like it. It would mean maybe some configuration of the room if we change things, but we do have that screen in the front there we need to have, so that would change things. But, yeah, hybrid would be good if we could do the technology so that people can come in person and still participate remotely.
So then our next meeting would be hybrid.
If we, well, depending on if, what staff thinks about the technology and if we need to order things or if what needs to happen, so I would defer to.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's mostly just the configuration of the room, and we were kind of looking at what our options would be. To have the public behind you is one option. I don't know if that's uncomfortable. You can see them on the screen if they were behind you. Otherwise, they could also be off to the side. And there's a lot of forums that I've seen lately that the, the public is just off to the side, and then you would have them come up and speak in front of the camera if they wanted to get public comment that way. So, we could kind of continue with this somewhat. It is, we are just kind of limited by, there's nowhere else to put a, a screen. Unless you put on like a rolling system, but then we're kind of limited by, you know, electrical outlets and some, sadly, set up great, but I think we can figure it out.
So, then the recommendation is to continue with Resolution Number 1192. We'll have to keep bringing this back along these things. Oh, yeah, it's hard to tell with the numbers how this COVID thing is going to shake out, because now we've got this V variant, China's having problems. So, there's a lot of variables still, and we're doing this sort of month by month. So, hopefully, in the summer, it will be better. But, anyway, if we are going to agree on that, we need to make a motion to reaffirm the finding of Resolution Number 1192.
I would motion that we reaffirm the findings of Resolution 1192.
I'll second.
Motion made by Alex Blain Hogan, seconded by Chris Kiran to reaffirm the findings and Resolution Number 1192. Is there any further discussion from council?
If we're gonna have our next meeting be hybrid, will it be noticed on the agenda, or how will we? How will that be noted?
Yeah, yeah, so we can do some outreach to let the public know that they can either come in person or, or zoom in still. And I don't know if you want to think about any type of capacity numbers for the room, or if you have any concerns with that, or if we want to be able to maintain, you know, a little bit of distance between people, or I'm not sure how, how far into this we want to go. People are kind of self, you know, simulating in these situations, it seems like, where they have a comfort level, so.
Okay, but we would still have to have this come back.
I believe, so, I'm going to talk to Ryan and to Russ about how people are starting to move forward. If you continue to just reaffirm this and add it as a hybrid, or would we just adopt maybe an interim policy, meeting policy for council? Or maybe you want to continue with this, you know, ongoing. It seems like a pretty good model. So, we can look at, you know, kind of how we transition, and a lot of municipalities and different JPAs and stuff are, are adopting kind of this hybrid model as well, because we're seeing more participation in government through this process, so that's good.
Okay, any further discussion from council? Any discussion from the audience on this item concerning having hybrid meetings? Seeing no hands, I'll come back to council.
Adely?
Yes.
Adely?
Yes.
This is Lynn Glitch. I'm, I'm participating remotely.
Okay.
And I would just like to, hi, I'd like to thank the council for make, considering this and making this decision. I think it really does improve access to, to government, and I think that's really important. So, I appreciate all the efforts that the staff and this, and the council has made to do that, and I'm glad that you're, that you're going to be doing that in, in the future as well. So, thank you very much for this resolution.
Okay, thank you, Lynn. Thanks for, for zooming in on that. So, seeing no other comments from public, I'll come back to council for the vote. All's in favor, say aye. Aye opposed, it passes unanimously. City Council vacancy, discuss, consider, and possibly appoint qualified applicants to fill City Council seat vacated on January 31, 2022. We did receive from Summer Doherty her resignation letter. She has moved out of the area. So, we have a council vacancy, and at this time, we have two members of our community that have stepped forward. And, again, need help with names. I think Alice Finan, is that who you're pronouncing?
Finan.
Finan, okay, Alice Finan, and the other one is Elise.
Stefani, I believe.
Stefani?
Stefani.
Stefani, okay. All right, so typically, what we've done is we've asked the applicants to make this a short presentation or speech. We have a little bit of what they see as their reason for applying, and then we're able to ask some questions of the applicant. So, Alice, since you're here, why don't we have you go ahead and, and just introduce yourself and let us know why you'd like to be on a Blue Lake City Council.
Okay, so I've been in Blue Lake for the past four years, and I feel like being a part of the community and helping the community just to support it and to be present and to meet people and to know what's going on is really important. And I cut back my teaching job so that I could be more a part of this community, because I love it so much. And I feel like being of service is really important, and I would like to inspire and encourage other people to do that. I also feel like it's really important to have your voice be heard and to be knowledgeable in making decisions that impact your community. My kids are here and we just love Blue Lake so much. We love this area, that we really like to know more people and be more involved and, and have more of a voice.
Okay, thank you, Alice. It says here that you volunteered at the Blue Lake Resource Center. Is that an ongoing?
Yeah.
You're doing every third Thursday.
Okay.
Yeah.
Every Thursday.
Okay. And it also says that you're a member of the NAEDC Education Educators for Equity.
Equity.
Okay. And then your, your children go to Blue Lake Elementary School?
They, my eldest child is at Six Rivers in Arcata, and then my son goes with me to Misswood, which is my, it's an alternate homeschooling base site. So, we're here at present. And I forgot to put on more than, I volunteer a lot, and I go to a lot of different meetings. So, I was running late because I was at Equity. And then I'm on the Rainbow Club, which is a group of people that are really trained to help support the LGBTQ+ community here.
So, Alice, we only have one regular City Council meeting, the fourth Tuesday of every month, but often we'll have to have maybe a special meeting. And then also, each one of us go to some other meetings as representation of Blue Lake. Like, if I go to the Hubble County Association of Governments and Eureka, others, or VDAC, or the Fire Department, in fact, that's something we'll have to talk about. Would that be a problem for you to have to attend maybe one or two other meetings?
That's a great question. It wouldn't be. I've been going to lots of other meetings with this school right now, like the Hubble County Commission meetings, and I'm not doing more of that. So, I think it's great. I don't have a problem with that.
Typically, you, you have one or two other assignments, and then you're also a substitute in case someone is not available for the role, pretty much.
Yeah, I don't late afternoons have the third Tuesday.
The fourth Tuesday, sorry. Yeah, it's okay. It's okay. You had me thinking for a minute. All right, is there any questions from council of Alice? All right. Um, typically, don't ask for the community to ask any questions. So, let's move on to the next applicant. Elise, I see you're on Zoom with us. Would you like to make a, a short speech as to why you want to be on the Blue Lake City Council?
Sure. Can you hear me okay?
You could be a little louder.
Okay. Um, so I wasn't really prepared to say anything, because I didn't know you were going to ask me to. Anyway. So, I like to be on the city council, because I feel like I've been in town for a long time. I've lived here for 34 years. I'm a property owner in town. I'm involved in farming on a property on West End Road as well, and and I feel like there's a lot of important things going on in town right now, and I'd like to be a part of that process of promoting positive changes and, and involving the community in, in planning and, and moving forward. I've had a fair bit of experience just in town, you know, with building and permitting and, and, and talking to neighbors that are going through various projects and things like that. So, I know that that's a piece of government that, that I have some experience in and, and part, have participated in. I'm, I'm a member of the Grange. My partner and I help with some of the, I have things that go on at the Grange. But otherwise, I'm not necessarily involved in meetings and, and government. At this time, I have been in the past a bit, but not currently. So, I work full-time, but I, I'm available for evening meetings.
Yeah, because I guess you heard my comments to Alice about how not only do we have just maybe just this one meeting of the fourth Tuesday, but then we each represent the city and other organizations outside of Blue Lake. And would those additional meetings be a problem for you, Elise?
No.
All right, any questions from council of Elise? Any other comments? Okay. And then we need to make a decision here as to which one of these folks will be on the council. And Mandy, could you tell us again how long this council fee is for? It's until when?
It's till the next, I want to say, the midterm election. So, I think, no. I can't remember. It's, it's, yeah, otherwise, we had to go in on the special election. So, it's whatever the next election cycle, general election cycle is coming forward.
See, because Summer is in the same election schedule as I am.
Right.
It's every four years. So, she was in the middle of a four-year.
Yeah. But you, because you have to, what Ryan had explained, that the process was, you had, you couldn't fill a, a multi-year term, because she had just been elected. So, there is another cycle of elections coming forward, so this would roll into that for elections. So, you can't appoint someone to like a four-year term, because there are election cycles available to, to put it back out to the community, essentially.
So, if it's, so if it's only valid in November of this year, then it would only be a two-year term, because that would then
Yeah, and then it would come up again in the next, yeah, so you stay on the same location.
Okay. All right, is that clear?
Yes.
All right, what is the voting of the council? Well, I'll make a motion that we, I don't usually make motions, but I'm going to make a motion that we appoint Alice Finan to the position. Yeah. It's been moved and seconded to Alice Finan with the, our city councilperson. Is there any further discussion from council?
I appreciate both applicants coming forward and submitting applications. And Elise, I appreciate your experience and desire to be more involved in council. And Alice too, I also appreciate your, yeah, your enthusiasm and your background in equity. Yeah, I just thank everyone for applying.
And there is an opportunity to run for office in November as well, so that
Right, and we'll be posting that, right? People have ample notice about when to submit applications, okay.
That'll be the first week in August, usually, as you can pick up an application and get your 20 signatures, I think it's up to now, and then make sure they're in, in time, and then you can be on the ballot. So, yes, well said, Chris. Thank you for that.
Can you, can you clarify? I, I heard your discussion about how long this appointment is for. So, is this appointment till the election in 2024, or is it until the election in 2022?
2022, this November, just in a few months. Yeah, and then, and then that election in 2022 will be for just a two-year term, so that it will catch up to the fact that this really was a four-year term. It was in the November for four, four-year term.
Right.
Okay. Any further discussion from council, from public? All's in favor, say aye. Aye opposed, it passes. Congratulations. You're welcome. Now, we can swear her in tonight. And I'm not sure if Mandy or Emily are going to do that, but there's a protocol here.
I don't necessarily have the oath in front of me. That I can pull it up. Can you Google oath of office for City Council? I think it's a standard oath.
You basically, you're having to take an oath to uphold the Constitution of the United States and Constitution of California. Oh, Elise?
Yeah.
I would just like to say congratulations to Alice on her appointment. But I'd also like to say to the council that I was not asked to, I was not invited to be in council chambers tonight. I was not told that it was an option for me to be there in person. I was not, nobody communicated with me in any way after I submitted my application. And so, I feel like, I applaud Alice's enthusiasm as well and her current involvement in community and government. But I'd also like to say that I think it looks really biased that you invited one of the two candidates to your chambers and you ignored the other one. So, I just feel like I have to say that out loud. I know you guys know my position on a number of topics that have been discussed recently. You know, I didn't really expect you to choose me and to appoint me, but at the same time, I think that the bias is pretty, pretty blaring. And I feel like the community should be aware that that's pretty obvious there.
Yeah, well, Elise, I honestly, there was no bias. I considered both applicants as equally as possible, and nobody was invited here in any way. We've been doing this hybrid. Some people have shown up in the past here, and others have zoomed in. It didn't really matter, to me anyway, that Alice was here and you weren't. And there was no special invitation given at all. No, no special treatment was, was had here, so just
At the last meeting, you guys talked about the, the Zoom thing, and I, that was never mentioned that people were allowed to come to the chambers in previous meetings discussing that. It was, the impression given was that only council members could come to chambers.
Well, it's, it's been a hybrid model for a couple of months. We had Catherine Donahue here a couple of months ago with her proclamation. And we have had a, a couple of people, but I understood a lot of people like to just zoom in as you do, so. But yes, it has been an option for at least three or four months now. But it didn't make a difference in our decision. I think we, the applicants considered that on merit. And you do have the opportunity to run for office in November, Elise.
Yes, I understand that.
To tell you the truth, years ago, I could never get appointed to the Blue Lake City Council. Forty years ago, when I started in government, I was on the Park Commission for eight years. I could never get on the city council by appointment. And what I did is I ran. I got some flyers together. I went door to door, and I got a few signs in town, and I talked to people, and I was elected. So, democracy works, and that's the way it works. So, if you'd like to be involved, there's always that very real possibility of running for office.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome. Did you find it, Emily?
I did. I also wanted to make a public comment. I did invite Elise to the meeting, March 16, upon replying to her application.
You spoke with her?
I do, and I have it via email as well.
Okay. So, according to Emily Woods, our acting secretary this evening, you were invited to the council meeting, and she has the email that she sent to you as well.
I had no, I just didn't know that that was a possibility to come in person. I thought she was inviting me to participate via Zoom.
And that was also the same option we gave to Alice, but she let us know today that she was going to walk it on. So, and people have, there was no special invitation to come in person. It was the same option that was provided to, to Ms. Stefani.
All right.
I do have an oath that, it's not completely Blue Lake-centric, but it is the legal oath that I could administer, if you guys want to move forward back.
I think we need to have it. All right, come on up, Alice, and raise your right hand.
Okay.
And repeat after Mandy.
I do solemnly swear or affirm
I do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I am duly qualified.
That I am duly qualified.
According to the Constitution of the state.
According to the Constitution of the state.
To exercise the duties of the office.
To exercise the duties of the office.
To which I have been selected.
To which I have been selected.
And that I will, to the best of my ability.
And that I will, to the best of my ability.
Discharge the duties thereof.
Discharge the duties thereof.
And preserve, protect, and defend.
And preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution of the city.
The Constitution of the city.
The state.
The state.
And of the United States.
And of the United States.
As a council member of the City of Blue Lake.
As a council member of the City of Blue Lake.
I will equally, fairly, and impartially
I will equally, fairly, and impartially.
To the best of my ability and skill.
To the best of my ability and skill.
Exercise the trust.
Exercise the trust.
Repose in me.
What was that one?
Repose.
Repose.
Repose in me. And will use my best endeavor.
And will use my, use my best endeavor.
To preserve the peace.
To preserve the peace.
And carry into effect according to law.
And carry into effect according to law.
The purpose for which I have been elected.
The purpose for which I have been elected. I don't know if you can make your way over, but there's a spot for you over there. Okay, thank you. Welcome. All right, we are going to move on now. Okay. As we discussed in the last item, there are meetings that we go to that are adjunct duties, as we call them. And when we get a new applicant or a new councilperson, we take a look at those adjunct duties to make sure that everyone has a chance to continue with where they are, or maybe make some changes. That's completely up to us. So, yeah, do you have a copy of that? That's an important piece of paper. So, um, there's the agency, the meeting day and time, and then there's a primary person, which is signified with a P, and then the alternate, which is an A. So, we'll just go down the list here and see what we wanted to do. We actually, this is a little homework that we had to do anyway in January, so this is a good time to go ahead and do it. Since we have, you get the book on board now. All right, let's start with Rija. Summer, now here we go. Summer was the primary, and Chris was the alternate. Redwood Regional Economic Development. They meet the fourth Monday of the month at 6:30. Yeah. Does anyone want to take that on, or?
I'd like you to be the primary on that. Drop in on a couple meetings and you actually have a big strategic planning meeting next week.
Right. Okay, so Chris, you want to be the primary now, and then Summer was the primary and you were the alternate. So is there anyone that would like to be the alternate on that? I would be happy to do that. Okay. The alternate, and typically you'll get a call, you know, maybe from Chris and they'll say, you know, I can't get her, whatever, and you guys will look that up. Humboldt County Association of Governments, HCOG, I am the primary on that Thursday at four o'clock. I'd like to continue with that, if it's okay with the council. Summer was the alternate, so who would like to be the alternate on that one? I can be the alternate on that one, too. Okay, I usually make it, but, because they're doing their meeting hybrid as well, so. Because of a lot of people from Ferndale, there's a person from Ferndale, from all the way at Riedel, and then north to Trinidad, so it's really convenient that everybody just has, gets to stay at home and do it in that way, so we, that's pretty much doing that. It's been awesome, actually. Okay, the HWMA stands for Humboldt Waste Management Authority. They meet the second Thursday at five thirty PM. Elaine, you're the primary and and Summer was the alternate. Would you like to continue as the primary?
I would.
I know, you're like that. I know, I actually love that, too. That was, I don't know, it's so fun talking about garbage. All right, and then, and then Summer was the alternate. Alice, would you like to be the alternate there, or does someone else want to jump in on that one? You can do that, okay, thank you. The Indian Gaming Grant Fund Commission, Blue Lake Ranch, Ria as needed. Ben, you're the primary and I'm the alternate. Have you ever been called for that? No, me neither. Yeah, let's just keep it. Okay. That was easy. Water Task Force, Humboldt Bay Municipal Water District, and this is also an as-needed thing, so I'd like to stay as the primary. When they are needed, I'd like to be a part of that. Chris, did you want to continue as the alternate on that?
Yeah.
Okay, great. RCEA, Redwood Coast Education, Energy Authority, third Monday at three PM. Chris, you were the primary, and that was the alternate. Would we like to just keep it at that?
Yeah, I mean, three o'clock is rough for me, but alternate is, okay.
I actually just became a vice chair of the RCEA.
Congratulations.
So I should probably stay on this.
Great.
And that meeting time's at three thirty.
Oh.
Anything before five is, is rough.
Yeah. Yeah, most of them are after, it's after that, so that is another one. Blue Lake Chamber Liaison, second Monday at five thirty PM at Skinner Store. Summer was the primary and I was the alternate. Anybody interested in the chamber? I would, I would go ahead and become the primary. You'll be the alternate, sure, okay. Especially with Annie and Mary Day coming up, I usually like to involve myself.
Did you have Alice's alternate on that as well?
Yeah, she'll be the alternate on that, on Blue Lake Chamber of Commerce. A Blue Lake Public Safety Commission Sheriff's Department Liaison, first Monday at six PM or as needed. Summer was the primary and Chris was the alternate. And I think this is another one that didn't happen very much. Does anyone want to?
No, they meet, don't they?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, do they? Oh, yeah. Oh, okay. Yeah, they need.
They're very consistent.
Oh, that's right, they need. Okay, is there anyone interested in being the primary on that?
I can do that.
Six PM, first Monday, okay. And then, Chris, did you want to continue as the alternate?
Sure, yeah, that's somebody like. Yeah, that'd be great.
Okay, so let's have Ben be the alternate on that. The Blue Lake Fire Department Liaison, third Mondays, it's like every other month, six thirty PM. Is that still their accurate time?
They're actually meeting every month.
Oh, every.
Yeah, that's every month. And was yesterday the?
I drew you off. It was the fourth, it was the, oh, but yeah, yesterday, I think it was the fourth, so I think it would have been. Yeah, yesterday, oh, no, you're right. Yesterday was the third.
Okay, so, yeah, third Mondays, every month at six thirty.
Okay, so you want to continue as a primary, Chris?
Ben, would you be interested in that one, or is that a time that would work for you?
Okay, so Ben, would you like to? Okay, Ben, would you like to be the primary on the Blue Lake Fire Department, and then, Chris, you will then be the alternate?
Yes.
Great.
So Chris is alternate.
Blue Lake Parks and Recreation Commission Liaison, Skinner Store, by monthly. Ben, you were the primary. And Elaine, you were the alternate, do you want? Yep, and it says, does, is there a time on that one, or a date?
I believe that they are at seven. They haven't started a meeting yet, but Trevor's just getting that going, and we have some vacancies. We've been trying to get everyone either reapplied or caught back up and advertised, so I think we've got some, I think we're very close to at least having a commission.
I think we just received some applications for the the last vacancy as well. And we, do you remember if we've, if we filled all of them, or if we still have one available?
We have one vacancy and I've received two applications.
Oh, okay, so at the next meeting, we'll bring those to you guys, and then that will fill that commission, and then they can start meeting more regularly.
Yeah, well, recreation has taken a real.
It was hard during COVID. We didn't really have anything, and we didn't have any staff, so we kind of put it on hiatus, and now we're trying to revamp ourselves a bit.
So the date and time is to be determined.
Yes, I agree, so. And so we're gonna keep Ben and Elaine.
Yeah, yeah, I'm the alternate, yep. Okay, yeah. Blue Lake Economic Development Commission Liaison, first Tuesdays at three thirty. Now, that's, that would be a difficult one for you. Then at this point, Chris, you're the primary on that, is that the way you like to keep it?
It's also a tough time for me to be making, but if somebody else can and wants to, I'd be happy to be the alternate. If someone wants to be the primary.
That's hard for you, too. You work as well, so that's, yeah, that's a hard time, Steve. Yeah, I know, I just hate to come to some of these, especially these local meetings, because it seems like as soon as the mayor walks into a room, things change a little bit. I I don't know, I don't want to be that influential. I'm not saying I'm all that powerful or anything, but it just seems like I purposely try to stay away from a lot of these, especially local things, because it just seems like it changes the meeting. I mean, I'll be happy to to start going.
Or if you wanted to alternate or something.
Well, I mean, three thirty is a hard, a hard time for you guys.
Yeah.
You know.
Okay, that'd be good.
So I'll go ahead and be the primary on that now, and then, Chris, and you could be the alternate. The Mad River Alliance, they meet quarterly, and I, I don't know that they've met much either since COVID. But just so that we fill the spaces, is there anyone, Summer was the primary. Is there anyone to be the primary on that? Alice, I'd be happy to do that. Go ahead and do that. You probably won't be called on, and Chris, you'll stay at the alternate. League of California Cities. Now, this is one that, Elaine, you're the primary and I'm the alternate. I know they're having a meeting in Ukiah that I couldn't make. Because it's not, the last one I made was by Zoom. Right, that was like.
And I did go in person, the one in Ukiah, it was three years ago. Yeah, so I've been to Ukiah, and then there was the one that we hosted here.
Oh, yeah, right. And then I think it was September or something like that, but I did the one in by Zoom for you.
Right.
I mean, we could keep it this way, and between the two of us, if one of us can make it, that'd be great. That sounds good, okay. And then the Mayor's Select Committee, I'm the primary on that. That usually is something that hooks on with HCOG, Humboldt County Association of Governments. And there's usually a decision we have to make, like, once every other, for five months, or five, five yearly, like, every other, every six months or something, but so it's just convenient for me to still be the primary on that, because it goes with HCOG, so I'll just stay with that, and then let's see. So Summer was the alternate, so you could be the alternate on that, too. Okay. Well, that looks good. Did you get it all? I have it here. There was a nice, a clean copy of it. Now, before I forget, I don't know if there's a specific, we also need to choose a mayor pro temp. Which is a fancy word for vice mayor, basically, if I can't be here. So far, you know, knock on wood. Pretty lucky about being here, but in the event that I'm not here, we need to choose a mayor pro temp, so. And what is the pleasure of the council?
I'd like to nominate Elaine.
Really?
Okay, I would.
All right. So would you like to make that a form of a motion?
Yeah, so I'll move that we Elaine Hogan as mayor pro temp.
Okay, moved by Chris Kiran, seconded by Ben McCree, that Elaine Hogan become our mayor pro temp. Is there any further discussion from council? Hey, you want from audience? Okay, back to council for the vote. All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, it passes. Congratulations, Elaine.
Again, do you, do you need to make a motion to, to reappoint for all the positions, or is that okay? I don't know if you need to or not.
I don't know either, but it did occur to me that the reason Summer was the alternate on the Mayor's Select Committee is because she was the mayor pro temp.
Oh, so you're right, you should be, yeah, you should be.
Sorry, Alice, I'm taking that one away from you.
Yeah. That's good. That's true. All right, so we need a motion to approve the council committee assignments.
I'll move to accept the new council committee assignment for twenty twenty-two.
Yeah, that should be changed, too.
Oh, yeah, and there was a typo also. That happens so often.
All right, motion made by Ben McCree, seconded by Elaine Hogan, to accept the new Blue Lake City many assignments for twenty twenty-two. Is there any further discussion from council? From audience, back to council for the vote. All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, it passes. Now, we are moving on to item seven, resolution number eleven ninety-six, surplus land designation. The resolution, City Council of the City of Blue Lake declaring city-owned property located within the city known as the Cester Park, number zero two five dash two zero one dash zero one nine, and zero two five dash two zero one dash zero zero nine. A surplus land discussion, discussion and direction. We were talking now about the corporation yard, is that correct? Okay, so for those of you who are familiar with the Dave Powers Creek District, there is a corner lot that is owned by the city, as known as the Corporation Yard. And it's gone through lots of phases and lots of messes, and it really looks actually the best it's ever looked as far as being cleared out, cleaned out. There's a building on it that is substandard, I would say, that needs to go, and still a few little items, and I think we use it for our yard waste, don't we? Every other month, or, yeah, so you might be familiar with it from that. This does not say that we are going to sell it. It's a, it's optional. There's a lease and or sell, but we have to declare it as surplus land. That's just a fancy term for being able to do what we want with it. Mandy, did you want to give more of the report?
Yeah, this is, so this is very much like the last process we just went through. It's a process the city will have to go through yearly. If we have land that's not being maximized, or that we are considering for redevelopment, the first step of that process is to let affordable housing developers know that there is some land in the city that could be considered for housing. It's a sixty-day notification process. It doesn't require that you do a project, but it does require that if someone is interested and they're qualified, that you would consider their proposals and negotiate in good faith. The end result does not have to be a project, but the goal has been to, you know, look at options to improve and and facilitate housing in our community, and the city does have some open space. We did go through this process for the other properties on Taylor. This property could have easily been included in that process, but we didn't we didn't feel that it met the definition of surplus, because we were, we were actively using it. And so there was some confusion on whether it would qualify. It has been a property that we've looked at over the years for redevelopment, though. So it does need to be, it does need to go through this process in order for us to look at options for future development. So, like I said, this will be a process that we go through each year for any properties that we're not, that we're not actively using or have buildings on. And this property, this is a really, actually a really good property for development. It's a corner lot. It's connected to some existing development, and there's a lot of opportunity to kind of maximize that site and make it a nicer site. I mean, it's obviously not, doesn't look the best down there, and it's something that we would like to see cleaned up and and see some other type of development come in, so. I'm bringing this back to you tonight, much like we did the other properties. We didn't receive any interest outside of Danco communities for for that project. I don't anticipate that, you know, a large developer from down south is gonna have interest in the site either. It is somewhat limited in capacity, and a lot of these projects are, have a much larger footprint to attract someone with that type of investment, so. So this is a process, and like I said, it doesn't require that you do anything with it except allow it to be considered for development on a legitimate platform.
And of course, we still have our zoning, which limits us to what can be put in there, so we still have a lot of control whether we lease it or sell it. I know a lot of properties we've got mostly that we would like to lease the property. This is one that you might want to think about selling, and just a thought out there. I'm not advocating one way or the other, I'm just saying, consider it, just because we still have control over the zoning of it. It's a, it's a nice spot. It dovetails nicely with the Russo property, which is being updated behind it. And there might be some opportunities for owners to work together. The Russo property is owned by the Russos, bought by from Swatki, so. Anyway, something to think about, but that's, you know, later down the road. Right now, we just have to find, make a finding about this.
The city can't consider any type of development opportunity until you go through this process first, and this is pretty brand-new to us. You know, we, we went through this several months ago, and, you know, we, we really dove into it to get a feel for it and a better understanding, and we made sure that, you know, that under the normal resolutions, it just talks about selling, we were able to insert leasing and and some other things to make it a little bit more palatable, because it feels very weird to say something is surplus when it does have value, and so we wrestled with that a little bit, and but I think the understanding is that this is a state-driven process that is required, so once we get past this hurdle, it gives you a lot more options to to do different projects on there.
Do we have a backup for the courtyard, or just?
Yeah, you know, we've been talking about this site for a number of years. It's probably one of the more highly developable sites that the city has down there, being a corner lot, being already connected. being already connected to other businesses and development. It's got all the infrastructures to it. So it's always been on the radar. We did look, then previous councils looked at like the Frito-Lay distributor project. They wanted to come out and do a distribution warehouse and thankfully council turned that down. But through that process, we've been looking at options to diversify our courtyard a bit. We don't need that much space. And actually, the facilities that are down there are so substandard that they really need to be taken out anyways and we could, we could absorb public works in our current facilities. We may want to think about in the future, maybe leasing a little bit of space just to park heavy equipment and that could go down maybe on Terry Johnson's property or something where it'd be more appropriate to have, you know, a backhoe and things. But we definitely don't need that much space. And I find with every public works crew I've ever worked with, the more space they have, the more stuff they acquire. And our, our crew is great and they fix a lot of things because they have that down there. But there's also a lot of things down there that we're holding on to that don't have value that could really go, so.
I would like to. I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, that's fine.
I was thinking about big equipment like the backhoe. Do we have a place to park that if and when this?
We do. So we have, we have an area down at the wastewater treatment plant already. And so that equipment gets taken down there a lot already, so. And it's a pretty good location, you know, it's not super accessible. It's a little bit out of the way. It does, you have to go through the casino parking lot to get to it. So it'd be a little bit, it's got a lot of eyes on it, so we've been fairly successful with things being safe down there. And like I said, we've office space, public works comes in every day to city hall anyways. That's where we kind of meet and have our morning talks and go over projects and they're in and out of city hall all day long and I have plenty of space. I could absorb them. I would eventually want to just get them more of like a little construction trailer, something smaller that they would have their own space, but not, we don't need. The space down there is ginormous and the trailers, but they're, they're literally falling apart and I don't even really feel good about, you know, our team being down there. It's, and luckily they're out so much, they don't have to be in that environment too much. But it's, it's well beyond its useful life. So the wastewater comment facility has a lot of land where we could accommodate certain aspects and then we just need to wrap it down our space a bit too. And then eventually, you know, we'll be absorbing some other space across Taylor Way that, you know, if we needed to, we could carve out a small section in the bath or something to, to make a little bit more of a yard or something, so. So the options are available and I, I honestly would love to see it cleaned up because I feel like in some respects, we're like the worst, you know, tenant down there. You know, when you have little businesses trying to make it and especially with the Russo family, they're putting so much effort into cleaning up that space and, you know, really trying to make it go for Blue Lake and, you know, to have them be next to the courtyard. You know, we've, we've got to, we have to be better and I think better would just actually be moving, so.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from council? Anyone from the audience that would like to weigh in on this topic? Lisa Hoover, yes.
Go ahead, Lisa.
Lisa, we can't hear you.
Hello, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. On this courtyard thing, I have a couple of questions. One of which will, is, is then places where we can take our green waste, is that now gone? That was a great advantage to the community. I really appreciated that. So where is that? Is that now no longer going to be an option for the city of Blue Lake?
Well, it's still an option as long as it is, property is not leased or sold, so there's nothing that's changing.
Is there a backup if it is not sold? That's my question.
Yeah, okay.
Where is, where's?
Okay, good question, and so.
Excuse me, what is the backup? What is the backup?
Yeah, so the, the city has several options for green waste and Trevor has been working. Right now, we're working with Caltrans on some, some large-scale cleanup opportunities. So we've been reevaluating kind of our green waste location anyways because it's, although it is somewhat convenient for the community to use the Taylor Way site, it's not necessarily super convenient for the site itself. So we are looking at additional options to facilitate that. So at this time, there's, there's nothing that's going to change quickly. This process just allows us to move forward with discussions and meet the objectives of the state's requirements. So there definitely won't be any impact for green waste for anytime soon.
But still, okay, and then second question. What were the exemptions that were found that why this would be considered surplus land? I understand the Surplus Land Act and, but exemptions, how come this is considered surplus land?
But through the process.
Being used by the city.
Well, partially because it's not used to, to its largest potential and also the fact that the city has been considering it for redevelopment for a number of years. So in order to even consider it for redevelopment, the city has to go through this process first. So although.
But what it is, it's, it's underutilized, but it is being utilized. I found that, that logic missing, that point is that this is a piece of property that has been utilized. It may have more stuff in it than people would like, but it's been utilized both by city staff and also by the community for green waste deposit. So I would find that it would necessarily fall into the surplus. The logic doesn't work that if you're planning on doing something that's different, the current condition of that land does not make it to, it doesn't meet this exemption finding.
And I think that's something that we've had to wrestle with, Lisa, that the surplus land, I really think is not a accurate description of what, what we consider the value of our, of our property assets. I think the bigger issue is the fact that the state is saying if you, this, if any municipality wants to pursue any type of development on a city-owned parcel, they first have to make the parcel available for affordable housing. So at this point, the city has to go through this process in order to consider the site for any type of redevelopment, which I've been directed as city manager to look at opportunities to redevelop space. And the courtyard has, has always, you know, since I've been here for the last almost six years or just six years now, been a priority property for consideration because we recognize that it does have potential for redevelopment and the courtyard isn't necessarily the best use of that space. So whether it's, we feel that it's surplus or where the, we feel that it meets the definition, the fact remains that we can't do anything until we go through this process.
Okay, so it is, it's a subjective approach versus one that actually is specified. That's what I'm hearing. It's a, it's a subjective position that.
No, it's not subjective. It's a, it's a legal term.
I, I understand, I understand, but your definition of this property being surplus has a subjectivity because you think it's not being used in a way that it should be. So, um, that's, um, that has a subjectivity to it versus, you know, that it has used, it's been used by the city for years. Yeah, maybe there are some other things that could be done, but in terms of it being, again, I'll use the word surplus. It doesn't kind of fall into that situation because it has had some purpose. It's had some storage facility for heavy equipment and also for green waste. So I just found the logic was more of a, this is a, it's a little bit more subjective versus to have it fit into that surplus land. Type of surplus land definition.
Well, it's again.
And I will also ask, but.
It's a legal term, Lisa. It's not a term I like or you like, but it's a legal term that we have to use in order to see something move forward on that land. I don't like the word either. I don't like the idea of it being called surplus. It sounds like throwaway or something like that, which it's not. It has a tremendous amount of value, being a corner lot, as Mandy pointed out, and, and its desirability. So I don't like the word either. However, let's not get hung up on that because that's not our word, it's not my word, it's not Mandy's word. It's, it's not your word. It's the state's word to be used so that entities like the city of Blue Lake can move forward and do something with this piece of property.
Yeah, it's so y'all can do something with it. I just, I'm not, the word is the fact that, I mean, that's the legal term of it and for better or worse, I'm just not sure that it falls into that definition of surplus. But, and on that topic, I, you mentioned that this was, Danko already is looking at another property for the regional, to meet the regional housing needs allocation. So this is also another piece of property that's going to be in addition to that because I thought the Danko was looking at what was being asked of us in that regional housing needs allocation. Is this some further housing development option for this corporate yard area?
It has the option of that, however, the city right now is not looking at or nor do we have any plans at all from anyone, Danko or other, to develop this piece of property. What we're doing now is making it available for some development. Whether it becomes housing, that's not our desire at this moment for that particular piece of property. We're looking at this actually down the line as being more of a retail, commercial area like a fish and tackle or bait shop and, and a little market or something like that. But because the state is coming down with this word surplus and this hoop that we need to jump through, this is where we're at.
Okay, I will argue and, and hopefully the letter that was signed by about 14 people will come up sometime in this, this meeting tonight in regards to the types of developments and things that are going down there. You can say we, we, I don't know who the we, who you're talking about necessarily, so please be mindful of that. And that's going to come up again. I sent my letter to the council, so not mine, 14 and myself. So, um, I just was this, because I'm, I'm very aware of the need for housing. I've researched that a lot and talked to HCOG and everybody about the minimum requirements and the things we. So I was, when Mandy, you said, I believe that this could possibly be housing too. I was going, oh, so we're doing more housing in addition to that that's being considered by Danko under that agreement? That was my fundamental question. It sounds like no, housing is not. Is, Mandy, maybe you can answer that because I think it came from you that you said housing. So I'm a little, I'm aware of the minimum needed for the affordable housing. I'm very aware of that and that's why this additional housing thing that you just said or that I heard kind of confused me.
So Lisa, I think you're confusing the, the, the issues. So the state requires that anytime a city desires to do any type of development on a city-owned property, whether that's leasing it out for development or selling it for development or developing it themselves, they first have to notice through the surplus lands process that they have a piece of property that could be developed. And they have to notice that to.
Yeah.
People who are interested in affordable housing. The state is just saying across the board, if you have something that could be developed for, for recreation space, retail, commercial, it also could be developed for housing and you have to make that option available and noticed first before you can do anything else. So, so yes, someone could come forward through this process and say, you know what? We would like to pursue an affordable housing project. You know, through our zoning, there's a lot of restrictions placed on that because the ultimate goal for the city has been to redevelop that space into more of a, you know, a live, work, walkable, recreation-centric type of development with some retail, commercial. And so the zone was written specifically to, to get to that point. So it can't just be, you know, a single affordable housing project. It would have to have retail, commercial space, so, you know, those options are out there. I don't anticipate that anyone is going to want, to want that property for that reason. But if someone did do this process, the council would have to consider that and they'd have to consider it in good faith because that's what the state is saying. We have a housing crisis, but that's not necessarily the city's focus. And it's definitely, I wouldn't say a focus for that property. That property has a lot of value on a commercial retail kind of front versus a housing front. So, you know, we've been looking at options over the years on what could happen on that space. But in order to do anything, first we have to meet the state mandate. And I agree, I think this, the term surplus is completely erroneous. It doesn't feel good to me either. I don't understand, you know, the, the thought process when, you know, when you have something of value, it's not surplus. But unfortunately, that's what we're left with. It's not the city making that determination, it's the state. So it is literally a hoop that we have to jump through to be able to come out on the other side and be able to entertain any type of development down there. And yes, the city is actively pursuing development. That's, that's been something we've been working on for years. It's been something that's been turned to me as an objective and a goal is to look for development that could take place in what was our industrial park, our business park and now the Powers Creek district to help support the objectives of the city. So, so that's what we are pursuing.
Okay, I, you've, you've said that a few times and again, I hope my letter will come up and it's not just about this surplus land, that the, the letter that, that 14 people signed on to will come up. Because I don't know the we that you're talking about. I don't know who these people are. And so, again, I have a strong concern about that, but that's, that's a topic that's about that whole area, not just about this particular corporation yard. So I was just not clear on, I understand, you first have to put up housing first before you do anything else. And, and let's say, how, let's say somebody does take this as housing. Then what does that mean for the Danko? Because if, if we can meet the surplus, that, we can meet the housing need. Let's say someone does get the, let's just, let's just throw this out. Someone does acquire the corporation yard or it's sold and they want to put housing in there and it meets the, the, the number of units that are provided. What does that mean for the Danko agreement?
Okay, so Lisa, you're getting way, way, way ahead of the game, okay?
No, I'm not. I am trying to get it, pacing it along the way so that you don't sign, so that you don't sign documents.
Anything close to anything like that happening would be discussed very completely and openly at a city council meeting.
At another meeting.
Done behind doors or in, in some other way that you think it might. It would be completely open and thoroughly discussed if that happens. And I'm putting a big if because chances are it's not, first of all. Secondly, the city is really not looking for housing in that particular location. That location is really meant more, as Mandy said, for a retail, commercial business, something like a, a little market with a baked and tackled place or something like that. So you're getting way ahead of things. And when we talk about we, who we're talking about is your city council, your elected representatives here that are discussing in an open forum how things are to go. And as I wrote you a letter to your letter, that there are many people in this community that feel that the Powers Creek district and the, and the direction that the council is going is a very good direction. That includes John Bartholomew, who is our Humboldt County tax collector. That includes Marvin Samuels, the Chamber of Commerce president. So there are people, not just the 14 people that signed your letter, but there are other people in this community that are saying, we like the direction that you're going in. We have a planning commission that makes a lot of these decisions as well, so it'll come to the planning commission first. We have zoning that restricts what can go in there. Everything is done completely open and above board. So please don't get ahead of yourself by saying, what if this developer comes in?
Well, no, it's, I'm a planner and I'm, the devil is in the details and the devil is in the details. Excuse me, um, I, and, and I hope some of the other council members read the letter because there is a lack of trust and there is a sense that you, you've said this a million times at council meetings, Eileen, and, and, and I'm not alone. And so let's just have a forum that everyone can try and be a part of. And that's all I'm going to say on that because I think I'm on the agenda. I, I asked for this to be a, a thing on the agenda, so, okay, so.
Okay, we, we do have a limit of three minutes. The back and forth.
I'm, I'm over, yeah.
But we're going to have to put an end to it at this time. Elise has her hand up. Now I'd like to give her an opportunity to speak. Elise? Elise, we can't hear.
I'm, here I am.
Thank you.
So I, I think I understand what Lisa's saying and. So, um, I, I think I understand what Lisa's saying and, um, it's, it's a common theme that we've been bringing up at just about every one of the council meetings, uh, for the last year. And, um, every time, um, some, some folks are present and they, they want to ask you not to go forward on something. Um, or they express concerns about a topic that's being discussed and voted on. Um, you know, the Danko, uh, project is the first thing that, um, that really got people excited. Um, I think we had over 30 people attending that Zoom meeting, uh, about a year ago. And, um, above those 30 people.
Against it, Elise. Not all of those people were against it. There were many people that were for the project. And the way government works is you.
I'm not finished, Adeline. I'm not finished. What I was going to say is of that.
I'm going to start timing you. Okay.
Go ahead. By all means, time me.
Okay.
Um, of those people, roughly 30 that were there, I'm getting, I'm going to estimate that 75% of them were against voting yes on the Danko, uh, issue at that time. Many people asked you to wait and to discuss it further, uh, before voting yes. And the council unanimously voted to go forward in spite of the overwhelming opposition that was present at that particular council meeting. And I do recall that you said lots of people were for it and they weren't at the meeting. And I understand that that's possible, that the meeting attendees are not completely statistically representative of the community opinion. However, when you have that many people show up to a meeting and tell you, no, 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 we're not supporting this. We don't want you to do this. And then right in their faces, you blatantly say, well, too bad. We're doing it anyway because we have to vote and you don't. That is such a smack in the face to.
I've never say that. I have never said that in any.
I know you didn't say it out loud. Your actions speak louder than your words. That's the whole point. People keep asking you for more opportunities to participate. And what did you all do today? You had a meeting with Storyland, not with the community, but with people that you invited to that meeting. Right? You didn't open it up to the full community. You didn't give everybody a chance to participate. You, you handpicked the people you wanted in that room. And that's what you're doing today with Alice. You don't want somebody who's opinionated like me with 34 years in this community. You want somebody like Alice who's been here for a little while, who's really enthusiastic and really malleable. Of course she's not going to stand up to you guys and say, this is wrong. We need to involve the community. We're not doing it right. That's what I was going to say. And y'all know that's exactly what I was going to say. And that's why I wasn't really considered for that position.
20 seconds. Did you have anything more to say, Elise?
I'm done.
Okay. Thank you for your input and thank you for, uh, joining us at our meeting. All right. Um, is there any further discussion from public? And anything from council? Okay. Is it clear what we're voting on tonight? All right. I will entertain a motion then that we adopt resolution number 1196.
Adoption of resolution 1196, the surplus lands designation.
Motion by Chris Curran, seconded by Ben McCree to, uh, pass resolution number 1196, the surplus land designation. Is there any further discussion from council? Any further input from the public? Act the council for the vote. All is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It passes unanimously. The Powers Creek District Development Update Discussion and Direction. The first thing where we have is the Storyland update. Powers Creek District Economic Analysis Discussion and Update. I was able to attend today's, um, meeting with the group called Storyland. We had a presentation where we looked at some auctions for, what we're looking at is the RV, possible RV park, which is where the Blue Lake Power Company is now, the big, ugly power company out there that is going to be, our lease for them is going to be up in 2025. So we're looking at what we can do with that piece of property. Um, in the lease, it does say that the owners have to have that property completely cleared. That'll be something else we'll have to worry about, uh, down the line, but that is the way it'll at least was written that, that it's supposed to be cleared by them when they leave. They have come to us and wanted extensions of the, of the lease. We've said no, because we have our own ideas of what we'd like to see. And one of the ideas that we have, and again, this, this is not set in stone. Councils in the future may say, what a crazy council. We don't want to do that with that or whatever. But at the moment, what we're looking at is an RV park. Now this group called Storyland, who I, that was today, there was about 30 of us here, business owners and whatnot. Um, yesterday was the meeting with them and staff. And they went over to the property and looked at it. They looked at our community. They got a feel for what's going on. And we did kind of a brainstorming today, I would call it, you know, it's an old fashioned term, but we looked at words and names of what we could, um, use, what kind of a, a theme we would want out there, what kind of a focus we would want out there. Um, and it was all, it was all guided by the members of the group. They were just facilitating. They just, um, you know, threw out ideas. So it was really, um, it was really interesting. Was I hadn't been in one of these a long time, especially since COVID and all. So, you know, we came up with some, some ideas. I mean, one of the ideas we came up with, we, we are the only, this was kind of, who we used to call these in my classroom where you fill in the blanks. There was a name for this, but anyway. Madlib. Thank you. I couldn't remember that word today when we were going through this. So they give us kind of a blank and we had to fill in what we thought the blank was. And then we had to have sort of a consensus. So we sort of came up with, we are the only sunny base camp in Humboldt County that provides a sunny, uh, base camp to, to, when it provides, provides, uh, well, I think I did that right, to explore the Redwood Coast with outdoor enthusiasts so that they experience premier recreation, uh, amenities worth returning to. Anyway, we just came up with ideas. That's a 20 to 30 acre lot out there. So we're talking about a pretty good amount of space. They also asked for us to just throw out things that we would like to see out there if it's an RV park. And the one that they did down in Lake Elsinore, which is my old stomping grounds down near Riverside. That used to be, uh, a dead zone down there, Lake Elsinore, but they had opportunities. So these people went in there and they developed it. Uh, but they had an RV park there. They had a park with those airstream, um, trailers. So the people don't have theirs. They can rent those. They had yurts. They had a swimming pool, which we threw out as one of our ideas. A small playground, washing, uh, station for bikes, uh, bathroom, showers, those kinds of things. Anyway, we just threw out a lot of ideas. How many of those can be incorporated? I don't know. But again, this is just someone we have contracted with to give us a kind of a vision to step off from. You know, so that we can show the community something. And then if it's totally what nobody wants, or if we want to tweak it, or do whatever we want to it, it will be totally our decision. Anyway, that's what I got out of it. So Mandy, you can go tell off of that.
Yeah. So just to provide, um, a, a little bit of context for the project. So the city was awarded a grant from EDA for about $220,000 to look at repurposing, failing industries in our community and how to transition them to more sustainable and long-term investments that, um, create sustainability for the community. And the city's been working a lot on creating opportunities for recreation. We've, um, you know, been working with mountain biking trails, uh, access to the river, horses, biking, the Annie and Mary Trail. Um, and so one of the projects that we've looked at, and it's actually been something that the community's looked at for over 20 years, was the idea of an RV parking campground in the community. So, uh, when we wrote the grant, um, the part of it was to look at the feasibility of that type of development. And then to also look at what other small businesses could come in as a support for that. So if you have an RV parking campground, maybe the community can also attract a grocery store or market. Um, could we attract maybe a recreation shop in conjunction with it? Could we look at expanding, um, you know, opportunities for food service? So we could use the demographic from the RV park also to plant some of the gap, um, demographic that we have in the community to support some, some features that would, um, provide service on both sides. So, uh, we were awarded the grant and we went out through an RFP process and Storyland is a, they really are storytellers. That's what they'll tell you, um, that they, they love to come into a project and help a community find, kind of find itself and create a vision and create an identity. And I felt like through the process of evaluating and, um, going through with the different commissions and things and the council, you know, we, we felt that Storyland was really, uh, a good fit for us because we really don't have a vision necessarily down in the Powers Creek District. It really is a blank slate. It doesn't have consistency in architecture. It doesn't have consistency in planning. And it definitely doesn't have consistency in development. So part of what Storyland is going to help us do through a longer term and multifaceted forum is help us create that identity. Um, and, um, you know, Elise mentioned that we did have a meeting today and it was, uh, it was our first meeting with Storyland and it was a very targeted audience. Um, it wasn't open to the community. Um, the goal of the first meeting, the first day was to meet with staff. They wanted to look at the infrastructure of the community, the site. Um, they wanted to go over our zoning. They wanted to talk about the process that we'd gone through to get to the point we're at today. They wanted to look at the sites themselves and also experience somewhat of what the community has to offer. Um, so it was a very drilled down, uh, meeting from some real specifics, you know, our wastewater capacity. Where do we get our water from? What's the, you know, the, what kind of wifi potential do we have in the area? So, um, today was a meeting that was, um, they wanted to talk with people who are in the recreation industry in our area and also people that have businesses that were connected to the recreation industry. They wanted to, to get a feel for what the people who are actually facilitating recreation in some respect, um, see as the City of Blue Lake's potential. So it was a very targeted group. Um, we, we invited representatives from Redwood Coast Mountain Biking Association, Revolution Bikes, RMI Outdoors, um, the brewery. We invited, um, our local businesses. Um, we targeted, uh, our planning commissioners. A couple of planning commissioners came, a couple of council members were invited. Adeline was able to attend.
Green Diamond.
Um, Green Diamond Resource Company was there. Um, so we had a, we had a good range of people who have different, um, connections to recreation space in the community. And so it was really a brainstorming session, a visioning session that was very focused, um, in this group. And the outcome is not necessarily going to be what the community forum, um, comes up with. I think it was a really fun process and I think we, we came to some really, um, really great ideas. And there was a lot of, um, kind of community value and regional value that came through the process as well. Um, the next engagement sessions will include the community. There will be forums set aside specifically for the community to come in and be involved and to conduct some of that visioning themselves, um, and to talk about what's palatable for them in the community and things they'd like to see or don't like to see. Um, so the, the process is, is, is a little bit, um, chunky and that we're taking things in small groups, um, and, but we're trying to get specific details from each one. So I don't want anyone to think that there won't be a, uh, opportunity for the community to engage because that's a very big piece of this whole process. And it was specifically written into their contract to make sure that that happened. So, um, today was not a meeting to exclude anyone. It was just to be able to get some very specific drilled down information, um, from a, a very specific demographic. So, um.
So decisions were made?
Absolutely not.
Was set at all? Um, and it wasn't anything done, um, uh, underhandedly or anything like that. It was not a, it was, it was not a, a public meeting in the sense that it wasn't something that we wanted to have, you know, 150 people here or anything, because the people that were there were people that make decisions, uh, for their own businesses. They were business owners. And I was just, I was just the, the only person really that was in government. I would say the rest of the people had more business ideas.
Did they talk at all about when the community meetings will start happening?
Yeah. So we do have a schedule. Um, this was, like I said, this was the first, I think we have like a four month period that we're, um, going to be working through additional meetings and they'll be doing, so they brought forward, they had an architect, an economic analyst, um, three designers. Uh, one of them is kind of a brand specialist. Uh, one of them's more of a spatial specialist. Um, and then, um, a couple of facilitators. Um, the person Brad today was really great at, at working with, you know, with the group to, you know, to bring out ideas and thought and vision. Um, and I, you know, it was, it was a really fun process. They do a really good job. They're, they're very Silicon Valley in some ways, but also very like, like, I don't know, like
Down to earth.
Down to earth brewery style, but they're, they're different than, than what we normally work with locally. And we specifically did that on purpose because we wanted to see something from an outsider's perspective. So many times, especially with local groups, you know, you, you get kind of the same stagnant thought process. Like it's, it's redwoods on the coast and, you know, and these guys are like, hey, you've got some great stuff. Like, you know, they just saw things through a different lens, which was good because we, we sometimes can't do that ourselves. So, um, I think, I think the community will really appreciate the process once we get into it. Um, and it, it very much will be community driven at that respect. But the end result has to be a project that's also feasible. So they're looking at like, oh, here are all the things that maybe the community would like to see. But in the end, is that feasible? Is it going to pay for itself? And would someone invest in it? Um, so that's where the balance comes in. So.
So that'd be like next month?
Yeah. And do you have the schedule on yet?
We ended about the end of June with our contract. So they said they're going to take what we gathered today. Um, and then give us the next couple of weeks and what that's going to look like visiting again.
Yeah. We're also going to be working with different groups in the, um, in the region. So, um, Humboldt County Economic Development, the Prosperity Group, the Regional Tourism Bureau, Humboldt Made, all of that. Because this is not just a Blue Lake project. This is really a regional project. You know, if we, if we get to the point where we, where I see this going, um, this would be a real gemstone for the whole region, um, and not just our community. Um, so there's not anything locally, um, that would be on kind of the scale and the types of amenities that we could provide and the opportunities. And, and that was something that we really teased out. You know, there's a lot of opportunities just in Blue Lake itself. I mean, you can come here and you can ride your bike. You can go with the river. You can ride mountain biking trails. You can ride your horses. You can ride skateboards. You can go roller skating. You can play baseball, bocce, pickleball. Like there's so many things that we are already doing here and people are coming here for. So it's, um, it's, I, I think it's something that has a lot of, um, of opportunities in the future.
Are there any other questions or comments from council? It's an ongoing process. And again, no decisions were made. Nothing is set in stone or anything like that. All right. I see we have two hands, Elise.
You want to do it each, at each, uh, A, B, C, D?
Oh.
End of the whole item?
Oh. Oh, all right.
That was just.
Were, were your, yeah, I know, but there are hands up here. Did, Elise, did you have a question or comment about the Storyland update?
Yes. I was wondering if you could tell me where that meeting was held today.
At the Skinner Store?
Right here, where, where we are now.
Okay. Um, I'd like to just say that, um, even though you're not soliciting, um, input from the community at large for this meeting, and maybe you won't be for the next one or the one after that. I think that it would be very wise of the council to make those meetings open to anyone who wants to attend them. Um, I think it's entirely, um, reasonable to say, you know, we have a bunch of people slated to participate. If you'd like to come as an observer, you're welcome to do that. Um, that type of thing is going to go a long way to instilling some trust in the process. And also, um, you know, opening the door to people developing, um, more, um, more trust in, in city council and, and city government. Um, I think there's been, I know, I know that you've said there's nothing's being decided, nothing's going, you know, nothing specific is going forward, but I, I also feel like you guys just don't get what we're saying in, on so many levels. We've been asking for open participation and, and mostly, and none of that has happened. You know, no focus groups, no focus meetings are happening. Council meetings is, are all that's happening. And by the way, on your website, it says that the meetings happen via Zoom and people may participate via Zoom. There's nothing on your website that says that you can walk into council chambers and join a meeting. And there's nothing in the email that Emily sent me that invited me to be there in person. So. So I think you guys really need to pay attention to what you're putting out there. It's just plain English. I'm not embellishing on what you've said or what you've published or what you've put on your website. It's just plain English. And in very plain English, you put things on the agenda that indicate that you're going to make uh, some sort of action. You're going to have some vote, some sort of action that is going to make a major, um, step in one direction or another. And then people come to the meetings and say, we don't like this. And you say, we're not doing anything. Nothing's happening. This has been going on for the last year. Nothing's happening. We're not doing anything. Well, things are happening and you are doing things and you really need to pay attention to what you're putting out there. Just plain English. Read, read the stuff you're publishing. It sounds like stuff is happening. It sounds like things are, are moving forward. So if that's really not what's happening, great, maybe you need to revisit how you're, uh, publishing your agenda and the things you're putting, um, out there for people to read.
Thirty seconds.
Really, in, in these, and I, I know you're going to thank me for my comment, but what I really want to hear is not thank you for your comment. I want to hear what you're going to do to address the concerns that are being brought to you repeatedly. Don't tell me thank you. Tell me what you're going to do. Thank you.
I see Lisa has her hand up. Lisa, would you like to, um, weigh in on the, uh, item? A Storyland update, Powers Creek District Economic Analysis. Lisa? Can't hear you.
Yes, yes, um. And again, I would probably share some of the thoughts that was just provided to you about meetings. One thing I, I, um, heard from you, Mandy, is that a specific demographic was invited to the meeting today. And I wonder about the representation. Um, it sounds like it's very tourism focused and there could be components of that. But I, um, who determined the specific, specific demographic? And I have read the proposal that went out to these bidders like Storyland. And they, they definitely, the proposal was promoting tourism in Blue Lake. And, um, again, the extent of that, it's all a matter of the extent and scale of that. Again, I wonder where that information came from and where the support, if it's vetted in the community. So this mean that you had demographic, I wonder about like, um, were there any folks there that were like fish ecologists and biologists that might be involved in some of the, the, the near, near riverine ecosystem where they invited today or just the tourism and sort of weigh in on all the things. I just think the demographic seems to be very biased towards only recreation and not towards some other things that could happen down there, whether it be restoration of the, the, the riverine system or whether some of those developments that you're talking about or seem to be supporting or even conducive to that setting being right on the river's edge. So again, I would just, it seems like the specific demographic that's invited to the meeting today. Again, you say no decisions have been made, but that is very telling about who you invited and where you want to go. Um, and again, um, you'll tell me that, oh yeah, we've been talking about this and people have been supporting this. But again, um, back to the letter is we're looking for, I mean, there could be support for some of that. I just want the forum to be able to address that because I think the demographics that you mentioned at today's meetings were all about recreational development, but there's some other things that could happen down there that could be way cool that maybe are not necessarily recreation oriented. So, um, just, there's a strong bias towards the recreation, not a more broader appeal to what could happen in that Taylor's Way area. So that's my concern is that, um, seems like some things are, as back to what Elise was saying, some things have kind of been
Thirty seconds, Lisa.
Okay, so what's, um, and, okay. I just would like, um, the council to hear that, that there is some, there's some preconceived, preconceived things about recreation. Some of it might be totally appropriate and fine, but the orientation that today's meeting, it sounds like Mandy, only people recreation oriented were, or on the planning commission were invited from other committees. And that's not representative of the Taylor's Way area.
Five seconds.
And there you go. Okay.
All right, um, we, uh, we're just discussing this item. It's a discussion only item, not an action item and just an update. Further, it'll be discussed and updated, uh, our next meeting. Uh, so we're going to move on then to A, B, the bike park status update and discussion.
Yeah, so, um, the Blue Lake Bike Park is moving forward. Um, we've had um, a, a high degree of success lately in some of our fundraising efforts and, um, our support from some of our local partners, including um, Redwood Coast Mountain Biking Association and Humboldt Skate Collective. And the friends of the Annie and Mary Rail Trail. Um, we had a local, um, Mad Scramble event, uh, recently. And that was a fundraiser for the bike park. Um, so that was really exciting. Um, they were able to donate, um, I think nine, was it nine hundred and some dollars? Oh, was it thirteen hundred?
Yeah.
Um, for that, um, to go towards the effort to build the bike park. Um, Emily and I cricketed our brains out and made a bunch of decals and some T-shirts, um, and we made like two hundred and fifty dollars, I think. Yeah, so we, um, so that's been fun. And then RCMBA had a gear swap, uh, last weekend. And, uh, the proceeds from that also went back to the bike park. So I believe that was how much ever?
Um, I think between those two efforts, so that was, that's the final bill hasn't come in, but we're looking between twenty-five hundred and thirty-five hundred dollars for the RCMBA gear swap. Um, with the generous twenty-five hundred dollar donation from the collective. Additionally, we got two hundred and twenty-five yards of a very specific, uh, specific sandy loam material from Pacific Builders, uh, to a tune of about seventy-five hundred bucks. So I think we're, I think we're above the, the, the ten K mark. We're moving forward. There's still a lot of progress to be made. We need to get the grading figured out. Um, but hopefully we can start moving dirt by this fall.
Okay, it's, um, it seems to be taking on a bit of a life of its own as it's getting more, um, interest and people are learning more about it and we're finding more ways to, uh, you know, to fundraise and people seem to want to fundraise for it. So that's really exciting. Um, so we are, we're working through the grading, um, process right now. That's our most, uh, critical aspect of the project is to ensure that you know, that we grade the property, um, properly so that we don't create any problems with, um, stormwater or, um, ponding. Um, I think that's probably the hardest part of it. And, um, so we're working through those issues. Luckily, we do have some, some expertise through the RCMBA crew. They've got some engineers and, and, and people who are part of that, who are lending some of their time and resources to help things. So um, so it's been, it's been a really fun project and it's fun to see the enthusiasm for it. And I think it's going to be a really great addition, um, as a new recreation space down there for the community and people coming to enjoy Blue Lake.
My only concern is the other day when I was riding my bike, I saw a little, little guy on top of that.
Yeah, we're going to put some
I know, it's one of those attractive nuisances. I mean, his parents were right there. Yeah, but it just, it made my heart, you know, go a little bit to see this little guy way on the top of that.
Yeah, we have some fencing that, um, that we're going to install around it to keep people off of it. And we'll put some more signage out. Yeah, I, we should have thought of that, that any dirt mound is, you know, something for kids to play on.
Yeah, he was totally excited about it.
Yeah, and I anticipate we're going to be receiving some additional, uh, fill material as well. So we'll need to make sure that that's all, um, fenced properly, so.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from Andy on A, B? Okay, we'll move on then to eight, C, the corporation yard development. We talked a little bit about this in the earlier agenda item. The city staff are in conversation with parties interested in developing the city's current corp yard for property. This property has been identified for development due to its close proximity to other commercial developments and the overall potential to site. Staff is working on options to relocate the current public works operations and I had identified the property for analysis by Storyland. City staff are recommending that the city council knows the property under the surplus land act in order to pursue various development scenarios. So, um, did you have anything else to add on that?
Um, yeah, so, um, as we've been moving through these discussions and the bike park and, uh, more outreach to, um, the recreation community, we've been, um, contacted by the owners of, uh, RMI, the outdoor store in Eureka. And they're really interested. They're, they're, they're big mountain bikers. They come out here regularly, um, multi, multiple times a week um, to ride the hatchery trails. Um, and Dan and Lacey Comer have expressed interest in working with the city to bring um, a version of RMI out to Blue Lake. Um, uh, Dan's family also operated, um, a few grocery stores, Comer Markets, um, throughout, um, I believe the Eureka area mostly. Um, so he kind of grew up in a grocery store and, uh, he, he said, you know, I don't really want to operate a grocery store, but I really want to operate a grocery store. Uh, and a grocery store in conjunction with a recreation store becomes a kind of a mercantile store, which would be really, um, would be really great for the community. So in conversations, he's also talked about building space for, uh, Revolution Bikes to, um, have a new location in Blue Lake. Um, so in talking with the owner of Revolution Bikes, Sean and Dan are very excited about the idea of uh, creating kind of a recreation, uh, gear store, grocery, mercantile store on the corp, corporation, um, site and working in conjunction with the Russos. And this has happened really fast. These are conversations just started three weeks ago when they came to us and said, hey, you know what? There's a lot of stuff happening and percolating. Um, and we really want to see about, you know, coming out here. We think you guys would be a great location for our second store. Um, and it's kind of the development that, you know, we, going through the opportu- opportunity zone. Um, you know, we've talked a lot about these types of, um, businesses that we'd like to attract and we've, you know, we had identified early on that kind of a recreation store, um, that could also have groceries so that the community would have amenities as well, could be a good opportunity. So it would be someone who maybe rented kayaks or, um, I know Dan said that his business did an amazing amount of business this year for tackle for the Map River. And, you know, his crew was like, man, we need a score in Blue Lake because they're all driving to Eureka to get back to Blue Lake with their gear for steelhead fishing. So, um, there's, he has a lot of in, insight into recreation economy and very specific to Blue Lake. Um, so they are, are very interested. Um, Dan and Sean were both invited to participate today in the meeting because of their connection and their connection to business and kind of having an understanding of the demographics. Dan's business also has a connection to RV, um, RV sales and repairs. So that's another interest level, you know, if there was an RV park campground out here, it would be a great, um, connection to his business for sales, um, repairs. You know, every, anytime you take your trailer down the road, something falls off, you know, whether you need a new hose or you know, something broke or, you know, you might need a small scale repair. So that was another attractive, um, for investment. So so those conversations are just continuing. Like I said, they just started about three weeks ago, but they seem to be very enthusiastic and I really do believe as we move forward through this process, we're going to, we're going to have this level of enthusiasm for Blue Lake. And we've been kind of seeing it move, you know, move forward.
Are there any questions or comments from Andy about this? Is there anyone from the public? Is that a hand raise?
Yes. Okay. Yeah, who, who, Dan is, who is Dan? Um?
His name is Dan Comer, C O M E R. And his family, um, owned the Comer Markets in Eureka. And he himself owns a place called R and I Bait and Cackle, I think it's called, isn't it?
It's RMI Outdoors.
Oh, R M I.
Outdoor Industries, I believe.
Okay. And so he's interested in possibly having a business out here in the district to sell, um, bait and cackle. And then he could also be interested in a market as well.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. You're welcome. Um, item D now, development agreement and ground lease with Danco Communities Discussion.
Yes.
I was going to just read what you here, the city is working with Danco Communities to explore development options for a portion of the city's properly located along Taylor Way. Development concepts include the development of approximately forty-five mixed income residential units along with approximately twenty thousand square feet of commercial retail space. The city's attorneys have developed a development agreement and draft ground lease, which is in the review stage. City staff have developed a list of required improvements necessary to accommodate the proposed development. And we'll be working to further refine these details as discussions continue. Once a final draft is prepared, the city attorney and the city manager will present the item to the city council for review and recommendation. The development agreement is the next step in the process of refining a project scope. This will include various special studies, architectural design and further vetting of infrastructure requirements. So we're getting an update on that.
Yeah, so, um, it's pretty much what's the, what you just read. Um, we have a draft that we've, um, we've been working on. The DDA is, um, kind of the next step in the process. And it's what would give, uh, Danco, um, some site control to be able to make some investments into a lot of kind of the preliminary environmental side of the project as well as some architectural, um, and engineering. Review. Um, so basically what it does, and, and Russ is here too, and he can help out if I, if I mess this up. It basically holds a space for Danco to make some investments into vetting the property. And also allowing us to continue to dialogue, um, the development with the council, knowing that um, someone can't come in the back door and basically buy the property out from underneath them. So they're going to be investing if, if the council decides to, um, assign the DDA, Danco would be putting a lot of money into the property, um, to, to really go through some of those special studies. There's a lot of, um, groundwork that has to take place prior to any project coming to council for a final consideration. Um, and so this would at least hold the property open for them to do that. Um, and then obviously the council has the final decision if they want to go forward with the project and through the process, you know, there's the discussions and the design work and the community outreach and, you know, more of that discussion. We, you know, I, I, I know people are concerned that we've, um, jumped ahead, but we really are very, very preliminary in this. I mean, we, we don't have drawings, we, we don't have studies, we don't have, um, we have kind of a box, um, and kind of some parameters that we've kind of preliminarily identified, which will allow this process to start to move forward if that's the council's will. Um, but this is what gets us to that next step where there can be that community input and outreach and, you know, the, the studies. So, um, anticipate that this will be coming back to the, uh, council very quickly. Um, it's being reviewed by Danco right now on their side. Um, we are working with them to look at some of the improvement asks that we've, that we felt were um, needed in the community, including infrastructure upgrades, um, community amenities, um, things like lighting sidewalks, vehicle charging stations, uh, wastewater upgrades, transit stops, um, parking, landscaping, lighting, um, signage, uh, trail improvements. Um, a lot, a whole host of things that we would require, that the staff bills are really kind of the foundational ask, um, for this type of development. And then obviously there'd be an opportunity to, to go beyond that, um, through the design process.
So we, we got a, uh, from Cash Bootjo, we got a rough, um, oh, it was, it was pretty nice to see uh, rendition of what it could look like. He drew a beautiful design of possibility.
That was, but that was years ago, right?
Okay, so that's been a few years ago. So my question is that, is Cash or an architect in the process of getting something together that we can kind of look at or, you know, just preliminary?
Yeah.
That was preliminary also, but something maybe a little more refined.
Yeah.
Where does that happen in the process?
And that's kind of what we're getting to. The, you know, the developer doesn't want to invest, you know, twenty to fifty thousand dollars into a project when they have nothing, no capacity to, um, you know, hold the site and move through a legitimate process. So part of what the CDA will allow is for Cash to come in and do more of that, those architectural drawings and more defined space development concepts. Um, well, we worked with Cash years ago to help us rezone the property. We, we met with Cash and he met with the community and we did, we have these, you know, visioning sessions and, and he did And, and he did develop some drawings, but the drawings that he developed were also the full space. So Danco is really only looking at a very small section of the property. So Cash's initial drawings were kind of reflective of what the community was saying that we could see down there. And that's what helped us formulate and finalize the ozone. So we took some of that vision that was different than what we had in the past and we used that to write the ozone. And that's a lot of opportunities. Opportunity zone. And that was a very long process. But what Danco is looking at is a very small kind of subset of that full build out concept. But Cash is the architect on the project and so he does have a lot of connection to the community. And I think he has a, you know, an understanding of some of the community concerns, you know, on, on scale and massing and, and impact. So he does have kind of a rough, I would say it's a very rough sketch of what could be on the site. But that was really done to, to more, I think delineate the acreage versus drill us down into an actual design. So when we started talking about, you know, how many units, how much retail commercial, then you have to start thinking about how many parking spaces and setbacks and things. So it started to give us the box to work within and that's kind of where we're at. He does, he did do some sketches of, but I, I think it's, it's very, it's very rough at this point. And I don't know that's necessarily where you would want the project to go after it goes through, you know, some discussion.
It's just nice to be able to look at something, you know, I, I really appreciate.
That's why we like to get to that point to be able to see something.
Yeah, I know the community would.
Yeah, I, and I totally understand there's the frustration of that, that we're not bringing anything forward yet. But we don't have, we don't have the base agreement to even be able to take that next step.
Okay, are there any other questions or comments?
Make sense for us?
Yeah, Mandy's summary is very accurate. So the development agreement and ground leads, there's still negotiation. But those documents, both of them binding agreements, those are ultimately council determinations. So when we finalize terms with Danco, it'll be presented to the council for consideration. We're trying to closely follow the council's prior direction during the negotiation process. And the general structure of that agreement, but the important thing to remember for both the council and the public is the agreement does not exempt Danco from any component of the permitting process. So they will have to go through every aspect of design review, secret compliance and the permitting protocol, which of course helps you shape the design of the project as well. That discretion will always remain.
So they'll have to go to the planning commission before this as well. So there's that other opportunity for them to be able to wait.
Would the DDA be like binding or would it, would there be options to alter it as we? Like, could we see it first and then?
Oh, absolutely. So my, my understanding of the DDA is that it allows us to have that dialogue and go through that process of design and vetting and evaluation. It, like I said, it just holds, it doesn't give the property to Danco, but allows them to make an investment so that we're going through a legitimate process to get to an endpoint where we decide like, you know, we just, we just don't like it. Like it just didn't work for either of us, but we legitimately went through a process. Or you know what, we've got to this endpoint that we all feel good about and we're ready to go on to the next step. So it's, it's, like I said, it's very hard for someone to come in and, and put so much effort and money into a piece of property that they don't own, which they won't own it, you're only thinking about leasing it without knowing that, that it's legit and that, that you're in good faith going through this process. But that's, I think, in, and what I understand is this is kind of where the fun starts too. You know, where we get to see and we get to start working with an architect and we get to start having those discussions and the community gets to have those discussions and start to see how it takes shape and what it looks like. And, and what kind of businesses are we trying to attract as part of it? So, so it should be more of the engagement at that point.
Okay, are there any other questions or comments from council? I see we have a hand in the audience. Lisa, would you like to weigh in on this item D?
Yeah, I know you all are very excited about this. Let's see about my comments. Just a question, Mandy, in the notes it said twenty thousand retail foot, square foot retail space. Is that supposed to be under where the houses are supposed to be? Or is that a next door to where the houses? That wasn't clear to me in, in the, the, the council agenda item.
Yeah.
So I have, I have one more question after that.
So that would be included in the footprint of the development. So the idea is that it's a mixed use development. So you have that mix of retail, commercial and living. Rather than having, you know, an apartment complex on, set aside by itself and then businesses on the other side, it would create that mix. So if you kind of think about like a historical downtown where you, you know, live above, maybe you live above your business or your workers live above, you know, their, their work environment. So it's the mixed use.
Okay. So it is like nested underneath it like other Danco developments I've seen in town.
Yeah, but there is some, some discussion about, we do have one business that's interested in coming out, who's really interested in like a rooftop patio space to take advantage of the view and, you know, the sunset and different options. So, so there is an opportunity to kind of blend it, I think, depending on what, what the design, you know, calls for.
Okay, that was the clarification. The right, second question is, it says forty-five mixed use, mixed, mixed income development. Forty, forty-five units, the basis for that is what?
Well, the basis of it is the efficiency and the, the buildability of, of the project.
When, when we looked at one of the other projects that Danco did in downtown Arcata, he pointed out during our visit there that the, some of the units are one bedroom, two bedroom and three bedroom. And the baths, you know, it was all sort of mixed up that there was a variety of units. If this is where your question is. And then he did point out that he always saves the best unit for the manager. He always has a manager on site so that the manager gets the best unit, which in this case in Arcata was the largest unit, the bay bedroom, two bath with the best view of the entire bay. It was a gorgeous spot when we went up there. So if that's your, if that was your, answering your question.
I think a, a big component of this has to do with, I'm sorry to use the word surplus again, but I understand what's, what's being asked of from the regional housing needs allocation. And, and the requirement is only thirty-four units. And I've, I've gotten this from HCOG and also talking to your planner. So the, the requirement is thirty-four units. So that's my question about the forty-five units. And that's eleven more units than what's been required in both the fifth and the sixth cycle of the planning. So why, I mean, you're developing more than, than.
I have.
Lisa, I think there's some confusion about this process. I mean, the city hasn't been going forward and with this effort to meet a specific number. The city is going to be on the hook for housing for the next several cycles. And we're going to continue to have to facilitate opportunities for housing development. So we're not looking at this as a stagnant number that we have to meet. You know, if we only meet thirty-four, then we, then we're good. That's, that's not the objective. And I know that Gary had provided you this information. And I, I believe through your conversation with HCOG, that maybe there was some misconception about, you know, the, what the city's viability was for housing and, and whether, you know, we were needing just these very targeted benchmarks. You know, where it's not a specific number. It's, it's creating opportunities for housing to come in because we're going to have this housing shortage, you know, for years and we have to facilitate it. And we can't just do that in, in a, and it's such a narrow scope that we're saying, you know, we just need to design just for, you know, a specific number. Because that's not also how economies happen as well. You know, it's got to be economical to build. There's, there's, you know, tipping points in construction and development. And if we get forty-five units, great, you know, it's.
Well, again, I think it's about thirty-five units. And if the city's not able to accommodate, you, you just have to do your due diligence to, to document there that there's not surplus land available. That's what I, what I, what I know. And so this thirty-five.
It's a little bit, it's not, I, I think, I think you misunderstood. You know, the city does have developable land.
I know you do.
We have a lot of, we have a lot of capacity to, you know, increase our density. We have a lot of, we have capacity to annex. We have capacity to maximize development opportunities. So the city has, there's, there's no, there's no smoking gun here that, or, or trip points.
Well, there has been one that was brought up that if, if we, if the city can't justifiably say that they, they need to do their due diligence to look at surplus lands and dedicate those to the assigned units for HCOG. And if you don't have those lands, then you go, you just document in the housing.
Not that, I know that. Process, Lisa, and I believe Gary outlined that to you already. It's not an easy process like that.
No, I'm not saying it's easy, but I, I've also talked to HCOG. I think the number of units required in, so are you going to put in like a ten-story high-rise here to accommodate a bunch of housing? Again, this, when it was first presented to me by you and Gary both, this thing about surplus lands and we want to be able to have a say in what happens down there versus having the state come in, I believe Adeline, you pointed this out. The state would come in and then take over and build whatever they wanted. So as long as, we definitely, we needed to meet, if we had the surplus lands, we are required to meet the assignment unless we justify otherwise that for this reason or that reason environmentally or whatever, we can't do it. So the additional units did raise a question for me when I saw them in the minutes tonight. And then also in conversation before, I go, why is forty-five versus this required of thirty-four units?
Lisa, your, your three minutes are up. So we, we are trying to keep it to under three minutes.
Okay, well.
You always have the opportunity to call staff and talk to Gary Lee on Wednesday mornings.
This, this, this has to do with the letter I wrote that I, this would be a part of also the story land if there are forums for that. So please.
We're, we're, we have your letter in our next agenda item, item nine, the council correspondence.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right, and are there any questions or additional comments on item D? Let's move on to council correspondence. So I believe council and council video copy. You received an email from Lisa Hoover and I made like four copies of them. On my phone and I, and I also responded to Lisa's letter with my response, which is pretty much things that we've said time and again. And also the fact that there are many, many community members that are behind what we're doing, that they see this as opportunity for us to grow in a, in a positive way. And I've had anyone, everyone from, as I pointed out, John Bartholomew, the city resident and the Humboldt County Tax Collector to the Marvin Samuels, the president of the Chamber of Commerce. So we've had a lot of positive feedback and the direction that we're going into is, I think, thoughtful. It's always been open. There's been lots of opportunities for people to weigh in, even during the terrible COVID time when we had to do it all by Zoom. We've been very accommodating and very open. And this process has continued and will continue to be thoughtful and open. If anyone else would like to weigh in, that's certainly their prerogative.
Yeah, I, I wouldn't mind having some sort of, I mean, we are going to have forums at some point. But yes, as she asks, just a non-city council and then not a planning meeting. Time that, I mean, I like to have an actual proposal to look at before we got this. And yeah, just some sort of meeting that was outside of the council in planning. It was a facilitated meeting where we can just look at the whole project and actually talk about a project.
You like.
Well, excited for the new meetings that we will have when we have something.
Yeah. Yeah, it's always helpful to have, like I pointed out earlier, a drawing of some kind of sketch or envision of what we're looking at. And that's not solid set, set in stone, but at least it's something we can jump off from and say, oh, okay. Well, I'd like to see it more like this and, you know, with even landscaping. I've seen Cash's drawings and they're all really, really good. And the last one we saw, I really liked, but it's not appropriate since it's been scaled down now. So that would be a component of it as well. So I know one of you didn't want me to say thank you, but I do thank you for your email and please continue to email us. We are your public representatives and, and that's the way government works. We are elected by you and, and we are driven by a vision for our town. And we listen to all of our constituents and I at least try to always answer emails when they come to me or phone call, people call me as well on the phone. Everyone knows where I live, so there's not a problem with being open in that way either. Lisa, you have your hand up?
So if, if this is that a letter, the letter asked for either to be on the agenda. And if you're addressing that letter now, are you saying no, you won't have special meetings? Or are you saying yes?
We're saying yes, we've already have one council person weigh in on that.
No, I appreciate Chris. Chris, thank you very much, Chris. I appreciate that. So that's what I'm not hearing. What is, is this, because my, my letter got in too late to be on the agenda, I was told. So I didn't know if it needed to be on the next agenda. Again, it's not my letter, it's, it's a letter for, I wrote it with input from folks, but they're about fourteen and there are probably about ten other people who didn't get a chance, I didn't hear back from them yet. But they were supportive of having forums that don't, they aren't necessarily, I want to make this really clear. There may be some opposition to some things, but there also may be support. And so I think it's important just to hear all that. So it's not, I just want to make that really clear and, and, you know, I can't go to all the council meetings or something like that. So I think there's a, I, I think there's going to be a full, full spectrum of folks that can, can provide that. So I just want to make that really, really clear. It's not just to say, no, I don't want that, but it's like, yeah, that's cool, let's do it, go for it, you know. So I just want to know, so the city can plan meetings in, in advance that are at a time of evening or on the weekend where people who work can attend. That's what I'm asking for. And so is that, can that happen?
That can definitely happen.
I think at this point, we want to see actual proposal of something to have a city meeting about it. Another idea, maybe something could be arranged at the Grange by community members and by council. I don't know if that's, if we can have multiple council members there.
Right.
I'm thinking about the last, so, okay, so we have story land for certain, we've identified certain parcels to go through that visioning process.
Well, it's kind of the whole Powers Creek District though, because that's kind of our problem is we don't really have, like, we don't really have an image or an idea. We don't know what we want it to look like or, so that's what they're going to be facilitating. And I feel like a lot of that is kind of what Lisa's asking for that's coming. The problem that I've had with her request is I don't have anything to show anybody. We don't have a project yet. We don't have anything to really look at. And we've been saying that every single time this comes up, that we're at the foundational part to get us to the point where we can start doing those things. But we're just, we're just not there yet. We will be and we're going to be there through several avenues. You know, if we, if the council moves forward with the DDA with Danco, that's going to come with public engagement and forums for discussion and to look and give feedback on ideas and colors and scope and scale and massing as well as story land. But right now, honestly, I don't even know what I would facilitate. We've, we've done the visioning process. We did that years ago and we had a lot of people that participated. And it was a really engaged process and it helped us to move forward the opportunity zone. And for three years, we've been going through a process with the ozone to do just those things, to look at what would we like to see there, what would we like to look at? And we wrote a zone to help us get to that point. Now we're talking about some more specific projects, but they're just not far enough. Now we're talking about some more specific projects, but they're just not far enough along in the process to even have that yet. So we're going to get there, you're not being left behind and you're not being left out. We just, you know, like I said, I wouldn't even know honestly what to facilitate at this point because it's, it, we're just not there yet.
Well, maybe, cause I wasn't and many, there are folks that were not a part of visioning, because I had no idea about it. I even asked, um, oh, a planning commissioner who didn't know about an RV park until they were told by, to, by you. So I won't mention that person, but, so I'm just saying the vision, maybe it happened years ago or whatever, but I think it's time to, um, outreach again, maybe for folks that are new to town, um, folks that missed it the first time and talk about that whole area down there, because it is a, it is a pretty cool area and it could be some cool development. And I just think it's time, you may not have a lot in terms of design and all that kind of stuff, but even the ideas and some of the things you've talked about tonight and the vision, that would be new to some people for sure. And, um, so that's what I'm asking for is kind of, let's start from scratch, but you may not have all the designs and all this stuff. But, but the ideas and like you said, the demographic that you were soliciting, see if the committee is vetted in that, into that. And that's what I'm asking for. And not myself, not just myself, I keep saying I, because I did write the letter, but again, other folks that I talked to, they were going, what, what? And, and they would like, they would like sort of a more holistic view of what's going on down there. Um, because they have walked their dogs down there forever or something like that and they've been doing this and, and what about this and what about that? So, um, it just maybe, uh, update, um, and bring us back to the table.
All right, so Storyland is through June, right?
So, yeah, in the next few months. And I feel like, I honestly feel like Storyland's your best bet for this. I, it's not something I can do, um, it's not something that I don't, I don't think there's many people that can do it, that can do it from, you know, and honestly, I am, I do have some bias, I'm a resident here, you know, I've lived here my whole life. So I do have some bias, you know, that I, I'm trying not to bring to the table. Um, but I also, you know, it's, it's hard not to have, um, have these ideas as well, as someone who lives here and recreates here and is raising our family here. So, you know, Storyland, I think is kind of that neutral party that can see it also from a different perspective and can lead you through that process. And I think we did some of that today and I was pretty impressed with how they were able to build some consensus. Um, and, you know, and build, you know, kind of a nice outcome, so.
Is Storyland, do they talk about housing though? Um, so that's, that's connected with this whole, the housing.
Absolutely, I mean, I think that the aspect that you're missing is the zoning. We wrote a zone and this zone was adopted and that, the zone is what creates the development box. And that zone allows for some level of housing, so.
I know, yeah, I know, yeah.
It's, that's, I mean, and maybe that's what, you know, like looking at that zone a little bit more. You know, we went through a process and I, as a resident, I felt really comfortable with it. I felt like we did a lot of due diligence and really looked at impacts to the community. I know like the mans are involved, the glens are involved, you know, there were other people. And yeah, we had some push and pull and we had to, you know, make some concessions and we had to make some hard decisions. But in the end, I think we have a really good document that, you know, that's really going to direct, you know, um, a good development project down there. So maybe that's a starting point to get a feel for that and maybe it'll give you a little bit more comfort level, um, but it is pretty well thought out.
Oh, I, I know about the zoning, the opportunity zoning, um, and, uh, so as long as, if Storyland can who also include public input about, you know, housing and retail space and all of that stuff, that, that would be, if that's the forum.
What they're hired to do.
Okay, all right, thank you, um, we're going to move on to consent agenda, is there anyone? Oh, Elise.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes. Okay, Elise, I think Lynn Glenn wants to speak, if she can. Lynn?
Is some, is somebody else speaking too? I'm on the phone, so it's a little confusing, sorry.
No, it's okay, go ahead Lynn.
Okay, um, well, I just had, uh, a, a comment regarding, I think we're still talking about, um, the project uh, in the Business Park, um, the Powers Creek District, uh, ozone. And, um, there's been some confusion, I think, in, in the public because there is a negotiation going on still, is that correct?
Yes.
Is that been concluded, okay? And but then the public's been told, well, there is no project, but then there's a company that's negotiating for a lease. And there's a lot of kind of conflicting information that's going out. So, um, I think it's, and Chris is talking about, I think, also the need for some kind of opportunity for the public to get a kind of a comprehensive, this is where we are, this is what we're doing, this is where we're going. Um, and maybe that would be maybe sometime sooner rather than later to clear up, um, the, the, uh, confusion that, that people are feeling with the kind of, the, the hard to understand process, I think.
Okay, thank you Lynn, Elise. Three minute.
Yes, um, so I'm looking at the web, at the Blue Lake, uh, city website and, um, and I did just find, um, some documents, uh, that are um, showing some opportunity zone type stuff and pictures of other places and different things. I think, and I haven't had a chance to fully, um, fully investigate what, what is in here, but, um, I'm wondering if, um, documents like this might not be made a little easier to find and if some of the other things that are going on, um, that probably are not covered here. You know, just, just general descriptions of, of what's in process right now. I mean, I don't know if there's, I mean, obviously it's not a confidential issue. Um, this, you know, we're, this is an open forum, a public forum, and so you can talk about what's going on with Danco. And if we can talk about it at a city council meeting, then we can talk about it on a website, right? So, I mean, I see, you know, this, what's, what I'm looking at, uh, talks about zoning and what's allowed and, uh, you know, um, has some nice, um, some nice graphics and whatnot going on. But I think that, you know, making all the information, even if it seems limited, making all the information that is current available to anybody who wants to go on the website and read it. Um, you know, um, your description in the, in the agenda is, you know, makes sense, but maybe it doesn't make sense, uh, and, or, or could be fully understood without somebody being at the meeting here tonight and listening to some of the discussion. So, um, you know, that's again, transparency and available information. I, I hear a lot of times, um, at council meetings, um, and if you call city hall and ask for something, oh, we'll talk to Mandy about it. Mandy will tell you about it, you can talk to Mandy or Mandy can give you the information you're asking for. Well, it seems to me that that's a really, really narrow conduit, okay? And all this information is a matter of public record and it should be very public. It should be at the, you know, it should be as easy as a click on a mouse to get this information. I mean, all these different documents and different stuff that's, that's in play, that's part of this process, should be, uh, really easily available and easy to find. Um, so I noticed, I, the stuff I found here, I found, um, under economic development. But perhaps, you know, there should be a tab on this, on the website that says what's new, what's going on. You know, what kind of, you know, so, I don't know, something that's obvious and something, um, you know, where this stuff is really easy to find. It's the first thing on the page. Could you comment on that for me, please, Adeline?
I, I think we've discussed this thoroughly this evening as we have at other meetings. I feel we're always being transparent, we're always being open, there's nothing going on behind closed doors, there's everything out in the open. We don't have anything concrete to show you, even the artist rendition that we had now some years ago is not valid now. So you will be completely informed as always, because that's the way government runs, it's completely open and transparent.
Well, I was asking, what I was just asking about is if this information could be put on the website.
Okay, well, we'll see if.
So we did, um, just to quickly answer that, we did create a, a tab for the Powers Creek District. But we just don't have anything to put there yet, um, and I think that's some of the confusion. I feel like maybe there's some thought that there's something that we're not showing you. We really don't, we, we literally do not have anything that, that's not a made available. Um, and I try to be as open and transparent in my reports, my agenda reports, I feel are fairly detailed. Um, if, if, if there's some lacking detail, it's probably because there's a lack of detail, it just doesn't exist yet. Um, so, and I'm sorry that we do have a narrow conduit, but honestly, we are such a small city that, you know what? If you called me, you called the city to talk about animal control or mowing the lawn or something, you're going to get me because that's just all that exists. Um, so, uh, I, I really don't know any other way. As we have things for the community, absolutely, we will, you know, find ways to, um, put them on the website. We've done outreach, we've done surveys, um, so I, I, I really just think that there's not, what you're not seeing is because it's just not there, it just doesn't exist yet.
Well, Andy, because we're on the ground floor, maybe like a two-column page, what? Danco, like Storyland, Storyland, put the, the resolution that we passed, that was like entering contract Storyland and scan the thing that you did with businesses, we got two things, Storyland, Danco, we have, uh, the DDA next meeting.
Yeah, absolutely.
Like document log, it will, it'll be sterile, it will be links to PDFs, but it'll be everything we have. And then we can keep up to date and we won't have to like go back and be like, oh, well, we did that and that.
Sure.
Really good to start.
Yeah. Yeah, and we really don't have, the only thing we have from Storyland at this point, just so everyone knows, is just that contract. Like, we don't have anything else and we have the grant that we wrote, that we provided and that we just literally started yesterday and today.
Okay, um, if there are no other.
Oh, I, I did, and I, I was trying to follow up on what, yeah, I'm, I'm sorry, is it Ben, is that your name? Um, I'm not sure what you're talking about, but it seems like the Powers Creek District webpage, because I go there and I look and see anything for Powers Creek focused, whether it's the DVA or it's, um, even the, the request that goes out for proposal to Storyland. Why wouldn't that be something that the public could get sort of informed about some of the ideas that are going there, why couldn't that? If you're waiting for final agreements and stuff, it seems like in the planning process, you'd want to put things on the Powers Creek District there. Like again, this DVA, just like you were saying, kind of showcase it, but put it maybe also on the Powers Creek District link that's at your webpage.
Lisa, we don't have a DDA, we, the council's never seen the DDA, it's in draft form, it's been being negotiated.
Okay, but when you do, but when you do, and also you have a contract with Storyland, so that could go on there, so.
Sure, and the RFP for Storyland was, was on there for months, um, available for anyone to look at for the scope of work. The grant was advertised.
It wasn't on the Power Creek, it was, it was from the economic analysis, I believe. So, not many, again, back to what Elise was saying, I wouldn't necessarily know to go the, the economic, you know, analysis page or whatever to look at. That is a member of the general public, so if it's Power Creeks oriented, even that request in, in the Storyland contract, also copy that and put that on the, the Powers Creek District webpage.
Sure, we can do that, we will do that.
Thank you.
Good, good idea, thank you very much for your, um, input. Um, we are now on the consent agenda, does anyone want to remove anything from the consent agenda? Or do the warrants of our, um, bills and our disbursements and the meeting minutes? Motion made by Elaine Hogan, seconded by Ben McCrease to approve the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion from council? Anything from public? Council for the vote, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, it passes. Reports of council and staff, I'm going to go around and quickly, we can report on any meetings that we've attended. This would be like those meetings that we just signed up for, so Elaine, I'm going to start with you.
Yeah, for Humboldt Waste Management Authority, um, we have directed staff to come back with a proposal to, um, repurpose the, uh, part of a Hawthorne transfer station that used to be for CRV um, for receiving organic waste, because under SB 133, that's something we need to start doing. And, uh, in the short term, that is a licensed facility and our sort of fastest option, it's not a long-term option, it's not a permanent option. But it will allow us, um, to receive, uh, some of the organic waste and be able to sort it here.
So restaurants can bring stuff over there?
Uh, not now. Not now, and, um, no, I believe it's Hawthorne Street would be the residential, um, organics and it would be a two, uh, sort of two-bag system where you bag your food waste and then your yard waste is collected in the same container. And then they would sort it at the Hawthorne Street Transfer Station. And for the short term, because this is not ideal, it's not what anyone wants for the short term, because we do not have a commercial organic composting facility for food waste in the county. It, we are looking at it having to get trucked out of the county, um, possibly to somewhere just in Mendocino County, not super far, but obviously farther than you would like organic waste to have to travel to be composted. Um, but again, because, uh, the law would affect in January, we are looking at, um, you know, having to come into compliance rather quickly. And so the consultants that have been hired are looking at short-term, medium-term and long-term, um, strategies to do that. And this is the short-term strategy that meets the goal and while they work on other, um, other options. And there are a lot of other exciting options, um, especially, you know, if the Nordic Aqua Farms is to go in, they have a lot of fish waste. The whole Samoa Peninsula that is now a special infrastructure financing district, there's opportunity for development of a facility perhaps out there. Um, and so there are a lot of options, but for now, uh, that's the one that we're moving forward with in the short term.
Great, okay, any other meetings? Remedies app. Okay, uh, last Thursday, I went to a, um, HCOG meeting, Humboldt County Association of Governments. And again, we're meeting by Zoom. We got a big report on the 101 corridor project, I noticed it was also in today's time standard on the front page. They're looking to put things out to bid by May and then re-advertising and, um, and of course steel prices, so things have changed. Blue Lake was on the radar, um, because we got some money allocated for the Habitatation Development Act, TBA article, um, for our pedestrian and bicycle suicide allocations. And then we also got an approval for our local transportation fund claim of forty-one thousand six hundred and fifty-six dollars and ninety-five cents. Go ahead, Chris.
See, I'm into Blue Lake Fire, RCA and Redec. Pretty much just business, but RCA, the airport microgrid, they're just finalizing the, uh, spinal testing of Island though. That should be done and like fully operational by June. I think they're planning another ribbon credit server for that. And, uh, at Redec, we're, see, next week, we're going to have a big, uh, five-year strategic planning session. That'll be good, like at Redex goals for the next five years.
You with the fire department?
Uh, it's pretty routine, um, nothing exciting or. Getting ready for, uh,
Okay, um, so those are the reports of our council persons. Then we have our city manager report, which we have in our packet and we would all read that. Is there anyone that would like to, due to the time limit here, we do have a closed session. Is there anyone that has any questions from the city manager's report on anything specifically that comes to mind or anything like that? Um, one thing I asked Mandy today was since the little hair salon place moved out of the building near the post office, the Blue N B, what's going back in there or what's in there? And it's a company called Blue Heron. What was that?
Blue Heron Botanicals.
Oh, botanicals, okay, so, um, she's got botanicals to sell, I guess, there.
She does like lip balm and stuff, yeah. She's got a very strong following.
Oh, good.
Yeah, very strong online presence. And you'll recognize her product line from various stores. But she'll also be looking to work with the local artisans and producers as well. So trying to get some of their product lines into her stores.
Does she make, she doesn't make it there. She makes it off site.
That'll be her full production facility. And she said in June, she'd like to open into a small retail front, if she could figure that out.
Cool.
And Shimaya Spa also sold to Earthen Heart Acupuncture and Botanicals.
Yeah, so they're retaining the building, but they, they have this acupuncturist that's coming and taking over the spa services area. So it's good. We got some new people. So maybe some like fresh ideas.
So they're leased, so Artie and Julie are keeping the, the building, but they're leasing it to an acupuncturist?
Yeah, she's a, an acupuncturist out of Eureka. And I guess she's also got a very strong following. And then Artie and Julie are also looking at multitasking that site to maybe do something out of the front part. So we've been really trying to push them to like, put a new door on, it has glass, it's more welcoming and maybe do something out of that space. So we're working really closely with them and it's been fun to have their energy and Artie's very enthused about Blue Lake, so.
And Andy Jones bought the corner, old CC Variety Place. So that's good news there, too. Okay. What's happening here? Alrighty, moving on to future agenda items. We might have a Storyland report, but we're not sure if it'll come in by our next meeting, which is April. April 26th. Maybe. And any other items will have to be brought to the council before the Wednesday, before the council, Tuesday council meeting. All right, and we are now at the closed session portion. So. Okay, and I think we have Mandy and Emily Leave and I just asked Emily Attorney. Okay, there's been a motion by Elaine Hogan, seconded by Ben McCrease to move into closed session per government, Public Employee Performance Evaluation Government Code 54957. Any further discussion?
She loves that camera.
So what I would